Okay. Anybody else? If not, Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to speak to the group?
Good evening. I am John Bergduff, representing the American Federation of Teachers. Section 1. D of the policy manual defines the authority and duties of the Board of Trustees of Lone Star College. The proper role of trustees has figured into the conversation at several board meetings recently. It has been said that the Board's primary duty is to hire the chancellor. Section 1. D makes it clear that the hiring and evaluation of the chancellor is indeed a significant duty of the Board, but its duties do not end there. It has also been said that the Board has the duty to enact policy, and that is correct as well. However, the duties of the Board do not end there either. Here are some passages from section 1. D. Quote, "The Board also monitors adherence to policies for programs, personnel, and fiscal and asset management." Again, quote, "To continually preserve the college's financial integrity, the Board pledges to vigilantly supervise college funds." Again, quote, "The Board strives to create a positive, future-oriented climate of integrity, innovation, and excellence, and works to build positive relationships with stakeholders." Unquote. I would suggest that faculty and staff are among those stakeholders, along with our students and the greater community. And finally, quote, "The Board has exclusive power and duty to govern and oversee the college's management." Unquote. The common theme here is conscious, proactive, accountable oversight of the management of the college. In other words, Mr. Chair and members of the Board, I say with gratitude for your service and deep respect for your collective talents and accomplishments that all of us who work here answer ultimately to you. You are our bosses. The chancellor answers to you, as section 1. D makes clear. Through the chain of command, the general counsel answers to you, the college presidents answer to you, I answer to you, and just about everyone in this room answers to you. By college policy, you cannot legitimately give up your oversight over any of us. Like any good bosses, you would agree that your work shouldn't take you into the weeds of the hundreds of decisions made by college employees every day. You should primarily chart the course and point the direction and let all of us march forward. However, also, like any good boss, if something is alleged to be going amiss, you are expected to take charge and intervene. You can see where I'm going with this. Tonight, you will be asked to vote in action items two through four to take away an employee's right to appeal a grievance, change in contract status, or contract termination to you. You are also being asked in action item five to eliminate a terminated staff member's right to appeal to anyone at all, and the right of an employee put on an administrative leave to grieve that decision at all. The Union has spoken on these policy proposals previously from the point of view of due process for employees. However, it is also important to understand that these revisions are asking you to give up your right and obligation to oversee the life of the college. The policy excerpts above make it clear that you are accountable to monitor adherence of policies related to personnel, that you are accountable to vigilantly supervise college funds, to preserve them from pointless legal fees, and that you must lead the way to strive for positive working relationships among stakeholders. We recognize that our current grievance and appeals policies don't work like we all had hoped. Both here and in the Advocate, we have urged open dialogue involving faculty and staff organizations, including the AFT. So far, that hasn't happened. Board Member Dr. Scott, at the November board meeting, asked if there could be at least one open forum to discuss concerns with the grievance policy. So far, that hasn't happened either. Passing action items two through five would repeal without replacing, and in the process, you would be giving up your right to provide the oversight you are obligated to provide, a right that, once given up, you might have a hard time getting back. The AFT respectfully urges that you vote no on these action items. Thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Good evening, Board. My name is David Wilson. I'm the director of the Cypress, Texas Tea Party. I wanted to bring your attention to the agenda item dealing with trustee misconduct. Apparently, there's never been a policy with regards to trustee misconduct, and I don't know that, you know, there's a particular need for one now. But I like the fact that you have a policy and that there's some things that can be done in the case that something like that would happen in the future. One of the things that concerned me when I read the policy, it talked about, reading from the policy as proposed, it says, "An independent third party will conduct the investigation." Independent third party in this section means any person appointed by the Board to conduct the investigation. Now, that sounds a little funny to me. For example, if one of the Board members was involved in some kind of misconduct, there would be nothing to stop the Board from appointing the independent third party to be the Board member's spouse, for example, because it says, "Anyone appointed by the Board." Now, obviously, that would be a conflict of interest. It wouldn't be an independent third party. So I think this whole section deserves a little bit more thought with regards to what that should be. Another thing it talks about is that, you know, the penalties that could be imposed, and it talked about sanctions that include in various items, and it talked about censuring the trustee. And I'd kind of like to know exactly what that means. It may be just a mark on the record, but nonetheless, that could use some more explanation as well. With that said, I wanted to comment about one other thing. I'm really impressed the way that you dealt with the Hurricane Harvey disasters and the things that have to be done there. One of the things I think this does, from a taxpayer's standpoint, gives you an opportunity, and I'm sure that you've probably already done that, to consider your reserve fund and how that factors into things. I recall from a previous board meeting that you had certain goals for your reserve funds where you wanted that to be. So my question would be, has Hurricane Harvey changed that at all? It would seem like this would be a prime opportunity to dip into that reserve fund if you feel that necessary, and I think taxpayers would understand. So when you get to that point in the meeting discussing the budgets, or at your next, discussing future budgets, I think relooking at that policy would be wise. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Mario. He mentioned a couple of questions. All right, we'll hold up. All right, thank you. Any others? Okay, thank you. We are now under the category to consider constant agenda items. Are there any items? We have items one through thirty-four. Are there any items that we would like to have considered separately?
Yes. One through four.
One, okay. Through four, okay. Any other items, Board members?
Four or five.
Okay, one through five, okay. Hearing none others. Items one through five will be considered separately. At this point in time, we will get a motion and a second on item six through thirty-four.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt items six through thirty-four. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Ayes have it. Okay. At this point in time, we will, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna take a motion on each item, and then we'll ask for comments, you know, during the, before we vote on it. So can I have a motion on item number one?
So moved.
Okay. Second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we vote on item number one. Are there any comments or questions?
Sure.
I guess Kyle would be the one that would start off with the question.
Sure, yeah. Mario, if you could come up to the podium on agenda item one. In terms of flushing out the censure and those sorts of things as we get down to it, but I wanted to start off, as my understanding of the governance structure of this college is concerned, that what appears to be a contradiction can't really be unresolved in terms of the Board appointing an independent third party. Because what happens is that if somebody else has that authority, then they're in effect the boss of the Board, when in fact, the government structure sets it up so that the Board is at the top of that structure.
Correct.
So it would have to be, a majority of the Board is in fact, the governing structure, so it would have to be at least five people who would nominate and vote on that person, and to do otherwise would be to sort of turn the government structure on its head, is how I understand it.
Correct. It would actually be a majority of the quorum.
Okay, majority, sorry.
That's correct.
All right. And then the things on censure, what's this look like in practice?
So, I mean, if you want the most recent example, Google our neighbor to the south, Houston Community College, and you will see exactly what that looks like.
Not the same Dave Wilson that just spoke. Let's be clear about that.
So, correct. So if you just hit Google, and, you know, they just had an issue with a trustee recently, and they had a public censure, and you can kind of get an idea of what that looks like in practice. And so right now, under our policy, there really is no way to do that.
Okay.
Can we have? Villaries?
Can you have what?
Villaries, isn't that what they call it?
Punishment for you.
No, sorry. No.
He wasn't alive during the vote.
And if I understand correctly, and trying to determine sort of a background or history where we're coming from with this, other governing authorities do practice, I understand that, like, for example, Congress, whatever, they can do that to their members. I mean, they don't have the right to remove somebody per se without, you know, whatever their laws is.
Right, and so, it's like Dr. Scott said, because essentially, the Court, or not the Court, the Board has original and ultimate jurisdiction for the governance, both of its own conduct and of the college, it really would be improper for anyone but the majority of the quorum present at whatever meeting this happens to appoint someone.
Yeah, as you're speaking, some of you are not speaking directly into the mic, and let's make sure that we do, you know, speaking to the mic for recording purposes. Gotcha.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I'd like to return to the definition of the word censure and its actual effect, should censure occur. We're gonna see in the future how it's gonna play out with our neighbors to the south, but surely, we have some examples in the past that we can look to. My research indicates that basically, a vote of censure is a vote of strong disapproval, and its effect depends on how it's received by those who are aware of it. Certainly, one would hope that the trustee that's been censured would feel embarrassment, but other than that, what is the practical effect, and am I correct in my definition?
Yes, ma'am. And the practical effect is essentially shame and embarrassment.
Shame and embarrassment. Okay.
But it is also a statement by the Board itself, isn't it?
Yes.
Correct. And I mean, in theory, I mean, for example, in my opinion, it should lead to the principle of resignation, right? And so, but you can't really force a trustee off the Board for that kind of behavior.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but state law, state law protects Board members?
Correct.
Any other comments, questions? Thanks, Mario. Since there are no other questions or comments, all those in favor of item number one, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes. Let's now move to item number two. I need a motion and a second to consider item two.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we adopt, vote on item number two. Are there any comments, questions, that need to be discussed?
Sure. For the sake of efficiency, my comments on two apply to three and four as well. So I will not make comments on those.
Well, let's go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, so I'm not gonna make comments on those, this applies across the board.
Okay.
What I know about this policy, these policies, is that they haven't functioned perfectly. What I know about all policies is that none do. It's only been in effect for about a year. I have three primary objections. It's been in effect for about a year. We've seen about a handful of cases come before the Board. So claims that the policy is a failure are too hasty. I don't think it's been given enough time. Those that claim it's overly burdensome on the Board overstate the case. This is my first concern. We have not given this policy a fair shake, and that frequency policy implementation reversals prove disruptive. If we need to make adjustments, then let's do so, but to redline entire sections is an overreaction. My second concern is the manner in which this measure was put before us. Took around three years, the hiring of a Board attorney, a new chancellor, and a new Board chair to get this policy up for a vote. Took only a few months to get its repeal on the agenda, and was done without a second reading or consultation with the Grievance or Policy Committee. My third concern is the restriction on Board oversight in general. There is good reason to support Board oversight. We hear often that when it comes to the operation of this college, we do so as a business. If that is true, then we should learn from the business. Those companies with disengaged boards, in which the flow of information to the Board is limited, and pathways to the Board are channeled through the executive team exclusively, have higher incidences of ethical and legal violations. That is, Board involvement is a backstop to bad behavior, whether it is Wind Resorts Holdings, Wells Fargo, Volkswagen, or anyone else that you see in the headlines. For corporate or executive malfeasance, the common thread is weak Board oversight. By adopting items two, three, and four, we reduce the information flow to the Board and weaken the Board's oversight capabilities. A review of the academic literature shows corporations with strong oversight find themselves in fewer lawsuits and ethical quandaries. They also find themselves receiving higher scores on corporate responsibility indices. Bottom line, oversight is good for the overall health of an organization. I cannot support a measure that reduces the oversight capacity of the Board. We have seen what happens on matters related to personnel when the Board does not have oversight capabilities. I do not risk return to those days.
So what, what does that mean, Kyle? What's your?
Sure. Sure. So, in general terms, if there's a problem that happens, it needs to have the ability to bubble up to the Board. We need to be able to have an information flow that doesn't come directly through a single individual or bottleneck at the top, because what that does is it reduces our access to information, and therefore, sets the agenda and can possibly color the view in a way that doesn't give all the facts.
I'm gonna...
Go ahead.
I agree with Kyle. One of the things that we do, as the Board of Trustees, is provide oversight. And when we limit flow of information to ourselves, we are limiting our oversight. In fact, we're handing that duty off to somebody else, and that's not what the voters elected us to do. I also noticed that in changing contract status and termination, the suggested revision is very clear that the representative of the employee may actively advocate. But the representative of the employee is not afforded the opportunity to actively advocate on behalf of the employee through the grievance procedure. This troubles me. In addition, I note that those of you who report directly to the chancellor are guaranteed appeal to the Board. And on its face, that makes perfect sense, because we would want you to have an opportunity to appeal when your original adverse decision-maker is in fact, the chancellor, who else is going to provide a backstop. But we can also provide that to all of our employees. And in fact, if we adopt these policies as they're written, woe be to a chancellor's direct report, who is then transferred to report to someone else, because you will have just lost your appeal to the Board. I have other comments on the other two policies, but I'll reserve them.
Chairman?
Go ahead.
Yeah. No, and first of all, I want to say that the experience or the, being in this position where we're addressing this particular changes, kind of required me to, you know, to research also, to look a little deeper and to understand a little bit about my role. Sometimes you think you know your role and you're clear on it, until you're in this situation. I appreciate the chancellor's willingness to spend some time and talk to me, and, you know, ask some of my concerns, and, you know, but in general, my concerns are these three are similar to the ones expressed by Kyle, that it involves, you know, surrendering this judgment that I just not feel comfortable. I think, you know, at this point, I'm at the point where sometimes I don't know what I don't know, and that's sort of how I come to this decision. And certainly, a lot of it involves, it's gonna be on me to feel a little bit better about this and to perhaps consider this, something like this in the future. And I know there's other proposals out there that we can consider, but I just wanted to say that I think it creates an opportunity for us to, as Board members, to really make ourselves clear on what we know and what we don't know, or those kind of things. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments? Well, I don't know if I'm out of order or not, but I'll make a couple. I've been around a long time, and I have worked in all kinds of environments, union, non-union, and et cetera. And most of my experience had been in the non-union environment. In the non-union environment, at Shell Oil Company at least, during the time that I was there, there were no formal grievance procedures at all. But employees had the opportunity to discuss concerns up through the chain of command. And it was the expectation from the President that as those requirements and expectations were discussed up through the chain of command, that the managers, they were being paid to take corrective action whenever it was necessary. And it worked quite well, you know, that way, because of the commitment on the part of the Board of Shell Oil and the senior management at Shell Oil. I have also worked, you know, in a union-type environment whereby there was a contract between the employer and the union on how things can be run. And that could work also depending upon the commitment, you know, made by the particular company or particular organization. So I think our employees have an opportunity up through the chain of command, you know, to raise concerns and questions. They also understand it correctly, and I'm barring on some of my old Dean's experience too, employees have the ability, just like citizens, to come to the Board, do an open forum, and talk about items that bother them or their coworkers. And the Board, you know, has the right to make their concerns an agenda item, just like we did when the guy, I remember one case that we had here. One senior individual was concerned about having to pay his old age fees and tuition, or tuition, whatever the case may be. And so we were so moved by that individual's concern, it became an agenda item, and at the next board meeting, the policy was changed to correct, not to correct the situation, but to change our policy. So, systems can work, you know, if people are dedicated, you know, to making those particular, you know, systems work. So I see the open forum that we have here as an opportunity for folks to bring up things, and then the Board, if they exercise their rights and privileges, can make those items agenda items, so that they can be further considered.
Just for clarification, then, your suggestion is that if a employee has a grievance, has been fired, that they speak in the open forum, and that we create a policy specifically around that employee, because that's all we have the authority to do if this measure's changed?
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying basically, the employee can talk about that.
Right, but then you're...
And if it becomes a problem, then the Board can, you know, I see it can become an agenda item.
About that particular employee?
Yeah.
Who would make it?
I would think, yeah. That's what I'm expressing. That's what I would think would happen, because otherwise, I mean, there's no need to hear the person. I would think, you know, every time an employee comes with an issue, or a citizen comes with an issue, we have an obligation to respond to that particular individual.
Actually, under the Open Meetings Act, we're very limited in our ability to respond to citizens addressing the Board unless they happen to be addressing us on a topic that's on that night's agenda.
Well, it can become an agenda item for the next, well, it can become an agenda item for the next meeting.
Can.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, it can, but it won't necessarily. So it's really a hollow remedy.
I don't know. I'm just saying, basically, based on my experience, I have seen how things like that work, and it worked effectively. That's just my opinion, and who knows?
I'd like to say something, though. I've been on the Board a long time and seen a number of changes in the policies, and seen the operations under a number of those different, differing policies. Linda, you and Scott have identified something that I think I agree with. The Board should not give up its rights to hear grievances. But by the other side of that coin, which is that anybody who has a grievance has a right to bring it to the Board, I've got a problem with that, too. And let me explain where I see that. We hear about grievances, I have heard about grievances from employees for over twenty years now, and I hear about them concurrent, at a current time, and I hear about them, things that have happened years ago. The ones that have come up through the Board that shouldn't have, quite frankly, if I, I would have been ashamed to have been a part of either side of that, and I think, I think there were a lot of people that were not properly managed and should have been, it should have been properly managed, and that probably wouldn't have happened. And I see now, in our structure, and in our upper management and going down, that we've got the kind of management that, going forward, it should work out much more the way you described, Alvin. And so I'm kind of mixed there, in that I don't think that the Board should entirely give up the Board's right to hear a grievance. But I don't think there should be a... But I don't think there should be a grievance guaranteed, that just anybody and everybody that wants to keep tromping through the path that's laid out in the policy now. So, what I would like to suggest is that we look at changing that portion of it for each of these three policies whereby the board, by a board vote, we can choose to review something as a grievance.
Which we do. Because with the grievance subcommittee, the subcommittee reviews each grievance and then makes a recommendation to the board on whether or not the board hears that grievance.
Then I want it to be brought to a vote.
Okay. Okay.
It's supposed to be. It's brought to a vote, yeah. We do.
So, you're not guaranteed to have your grievance brought, you're guaranteed to have the grievance committee review your grievance.
Yeah, right.
Who then makes a recommendation to the board, but the board does not have to follow the committee's recommendation.
Correct.
All right.
That's the current policy as it stands right now. Prior to this.
About grievances.
About grievances.
Not the policy.
So, that just applies to number three.
So, are we, do we not have, do our employees not have the right to bring something to the board's attention, to the grievance process on two and four?
Right, you should probably look at and address these separately because they're really different policies. Right now, the recommendation for, and Mario is much more familiar with the changes that they're recommending, the change in contract status, it's taking out any appeal to the board, right?
Yeah, Mario, could you come in or give us a, not necessarily a brief summary, but a summary of what we're talking about, an item or item two?
So, there's essentially three changes. The first one, which has been talked about at length, is the removal of the board appeal and sort of the procedural irregularity litmus test to sort of test whether something goes through the board or not. The second one is making it explicit what we've always practiced, which is that an attorney can actively participate in that process. And then number three is that clarification of chief area officers. We have some chief area officers that don't report directly to the chancellor, and so we want to make it clear that just because you're a chief area officer doesn't mean that you necessarily get a board appeal under the new policy because you don't report directly to the chancellor. So, those are the three major changes.
Any other questions? That I need to...
So, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Because it takes out the litmus, like he said, it takes out procedural irregularities, so you don't have a deal.
Okay. And so, that the public understands, our human resources and legal department are completely different now than they were six years ago. And the administration of how grievances are handled is completely different now. And when something gets up to the point where we or the grievance committee is considering it, they've got reams of information, both that that's submitted by the grievance side and that that's through extensive efforts, sometimes with outside counsel doing it, on the district side. And frankly, the information becomes quite telling. And that's why you see, I know Steve has said that when it gets up to him, he's about 50/50 on how he's responded to them. And when it gets up to us, it is pretty clear that it doesn't need to come to us. And it's not necessarily that everything worked out perfectly on the management side. And many times, there are concessions made to help an employee get a better position. So...
And the other thing I want to mention also, at least it's been my experience over the last three years, and Steve is the only chancellor that I've worked for. I know anytime I have a question or I ask him to look at something because of issues and et cetera, you know, that happens. And so, with him being reactive, you know, to questions and concerns and et cetera, that it has made me feel more comfortable, you know, with the process because of his responsiveness and willingness to address issues.
And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. If we adopt the change in contract status policy the way that it's been presented to us tonight, the only people who will have the right to appeal to the board are direct reports of the chancellor. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, I agree with a lot of what Kyle said. I also agree with Dave that it shouldn't be wide open, which is why we have tried to limit the flow with this procedural irregularity requirement that has been quite challenging. I agree with Kyle, it is too soon. We still don't even have everybody trained on what this says or how to follow it, and we're going to change it again? I've said before, I think we should adopt policy based on overarching principles, not based on people or personalities who happen to currently be holding certain positions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just curious, what is it that the group want? I mean, we're representing a group of people, what do they want?
What do you mean?
I mean, if we were to ask all the people working for All Star and voted on it, what would they want?
Well, in all fairness, this has been on the agenda for quite some time, and our responsibility as board of trustees is to go and find that out before we vote.
Okay. That's all I'm asking.
Okay, if there are no other comments, let's take a roll call to vote upon this so we make sure that no issues or concerns later on. And I'm going to start the roll call with Art.
What are we talking about, which one? Two.
Item two, only.
Name.
Lynda?
Name.
Dave?
Name.
Kyle?
Name.
Smith?
Yes.
Name.
Yes.
Yes.
Just one, two, three, four, five, names, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, three, yes.
There's nine of us.
It failed. It's eight of us. It's one absent. Item number two failed. Okay. Item number three, dealing with employee grievances. And Kyle, you pull this one, and you've made your comment.
Yes, sir.
Are there any additional comments?
Yes, I have some fairly specific comments.
Do we need a motion and second?
Oh, did I do that?
Sorry.
Okay.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we consider item number three. Are there any unreadiness, questions or comments?
Yes.
Yes, follow through.
Okay. In section 4F10.05D, there seems to be an incomplete reference. Yet, this is referencing grievances related to discrimination and that sort of thing, and it says that this grievance policy doesn't apply to those issues because the procedures, the policy for those types of issues are elsewhere in, and I quote, section 4F, but this is all section 4F. So, I think we need to be more specific. Which section in 4F should those types of grievances go to? I think it's very interesting that in section 4.F.10.07, a representative may assist the grievant but may not, or at least it is not expressly stated, may not actively advocate while the administration may ask questions. Section 4.F.10.08 says that all employees will be provided information on a dispute resolution, alternative dispute resolution. Where exactly is that information? Can it be posted on the website with a link embedded in the policy so we don't have to Section 4.F.10.11, second level appeal, states that the grievant gets three days to respond to documents or information that the chancellor obtained and relied upon that had not previously been provided. Everywhere else in the policy, the time limits are three, are X working days, but that word is missing in this section. So, it seems that if the chancellor obtained additional information or documents not previously provided to the grievant, they would have three calendar days, which makes a huge difference, especially if day one is a Friday. And as has already been stated, if we adopt this policy as it's written, there will be no appeal to the board.
Those are my comments.
Do you care to respond?
No, ma'am.
So, the way these are written is what you intended, an incomplete reference?
No, ma'am, that's not what I said. You asked me if I had any comments, and I said that I don't.
Okay, all right, let's try it another way. Let's try it another way, then.
Okay.
Should the reference perhaps be more complete to direct employees to the procedure to be followed if the grievance addresses discrimination or those other excluded provisions?
I mean, I think it's pretty clear that it's section 4E. I mean, it's a few pages down, it's actually, actually, item number five. If you look at section 4E, it talks entirely about discrimination, and it would be hard to miss that section.
But it would be, it wouldn't be a big problem to refer, put the complete reference, right?
No, no, it wouldn't.
All right. And what about the actively advocate?
What about it?
Is it intentional that in the grievance policy, representatives cannot?
Yes.
Okay. So, that to me, as a trustee, seems inherently unfair because the administration can question, but the employee cannot, or the employee is hamstrung and can only be assisted?
That's actually not accurate.
Okay, tell me how it's not accurate.
So, I can tell you that in two and a half years, a attorney has never questioned a grievance. So, likewise, a grievance attorney is not allowed to question an administrator.
The administrator can ask questions.
Yes, just like the grievant can.
And the grievant can.
Correct.
Can we agree, perhaps, that an administrator might be more sophisticated than, say, a custodian, and that might not be a very even match?
We could agree, but we don't.
Okay. And is there a problem with providing a more explicit location for where people can find the alternative dispute resolution information?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And is it intentional that an employee will receive only three calendar days to respond to information that the chancellor obtained and relied upon that had not previously been provided?
Well, I think by your own statement, you said three days, so I don't think it says calendar days. So, are you asking me if the vagueness is intentional? No, it's not.
The fact that the word "working" does not appear there, but it appears in all of the other references to time periods, indicates that the interpretation is calendar days. Is that the intent?
No, ma'am, and I don't agree with the characterization.
Okay, so then this is perhaps an error? An oversight, something that needs to be fixed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I want to, Dr. Hay, when the process gets to your level, what actually happens?
So, the practical piece of this is, I will ask the grievant to tell me what happened in their own words, even though I have sometimes hundreds of pages in front of me. So, and the attorney has been with them in most cases, and the attorney, what I told them when we start is, I want to know the facts from their perspective, and without fail, every occasion, I have told the person, if they need to talk with their attorney while we're there, they can. The attorney that has been present, whoever that might be, has consistently leaned over and said, "Make sure you tell him about this." So, that's the reason the administration might talk, that's me in that case, but they do consult with their attorney. There's no prohibition on that. We just didn't want the attorneys to get into asking questions, no matter what level it was. So, then we have to have our attorneys present, and then we go back and forth. So, we were trying to get to the bottom of this, or I am personally, so that's the issue there. But not one time have we told the attorney that they cannot talk to their, to the person they're representing. And that has worked in every occasion. There's usually frequent conversations between the attorney and the grievant.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Are we on three now?
We're on item number three. So, I'm going to start the vote, but, Dr. Trobe, I'm going to start.
Yeah, I will say something.
Go ahead.
I've never been able here to be the English professor, but this time I'm going to be. In Othello, Iago is trying to find out whether his wife, Desdemona, is having an affair with Cassio, and Iago wants to set it up to make it seem that way. And Othello says, "I want to see, quote, 'the ocular proof.' I'm not going to accuse my wife of something unless I see the proof of it." Well, the algorithm arranges it that way, and Desdemona ends up being murdered by Othello. I make this point because I have now, for years, seen virtually daily, the ocular proof of how fair and bright and effective Steve is and Mario is. It is trial by example. It's trial by achievement. Those two guys, you've heard it, it's saving me to the point of ad nauseam, but those two guys are absolutely terrific, and I mean terrific. Now, what the board has done here tonight, some of, is to suggest by implication that you can't quite fully trust Steve or Mario. I am not going to insult those two that way. Now, if you argue, "Well, we'll pass it now because down the road, things may change." That's a specious argument. that's a specious argument. If down the road, we get a chancellor who's a dud, or a general counsel who's a dud, the board can act, has the authority to act, to change the policy. So to argue we need to do it now for ten years from now is an empty, empty argument. The other point I want to make, this is an honorable board. If someone has been the victim of an injustice here, if they've been a victim of an injustice, let anybody who wants come up here for five minutes and tell us. And this board is honorable enough that it will hear it, that it will put it perhaps on an agenda item next month, but it will respond. So if you add all of these things together, I'm going to vote forwards on this tonight. Number one, because I've seen the proof, I've seen it daily, that these guys are really, really exemplary. Number two, I am not going to imply any kind of distrust of those two people, as some of you people have. And number three, I will say that the public, if the object, if anybody objects to what happens here, make your pitch, this honorable board can do something about it.
Okay, Ron, thank you.
I have additional ocular proof, which is, the only reason this got put on the agenda is because the dud of the chancellor we had was replaced by Steve, and therefore, if we do get a dud of a chancellor, you know good and well that they can drag their feet on implementing a good policy, and that's why it's important to leave it in place now.
Thank you, Kyle, let's, let's move on. Okay, at this point in time, I, I, everyone's had a chance to express, you know, their opinion, et cetera.
First of all, I agree with you. Steve and Mario are excellent, and I'm very proud of, of the way they're running the district now. But they're not going to be here forever, and we're not going to be here forever.
Yeah, but, you, you never...
Well, yeah, that's not, that's not debate, debate it any further. Ron, we'll start the vote with you on item three.
Yes, yes.
Aye.
Ken?
No.
Uh, yes.
Smith, yes.
Scott, no.
Vote no.
Good, no.
Moody, you're no.
Okay, five, three, failed.
Actually, Dr. Smith, I have four.
What, okay.
Four.
Yes, it was Trobridge, Salvar, myself.
Yeah.
And then five, no, unless I missed, missed counting.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. But I appreciate you making sure that we...
I'm trying, I'm trying.
Do it right the first time. You, you have it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Kyle, you're up again, and I'm, well, you've already talked about it. So I see what, let's have a motion on item four, Kyle.
Show move.
It's been moved and properly seconded, we consider item number four.
Yeah.
Any comments?
Yes, please.
Yes, go ahead. Trustee Good.
All right, section four dot F dot ten dot thirteen, B eight, specifically states that employees may not use work time or college resources to prepare for their hearing, but administration can. Again, that seems inherently unfair and stacking the deck. The following section, B nine, states that the chancellor or his designee can alter the hearing procedures, quote, "prior to the hearing." No time limits. Theoretically, as long as he does it in writing, he could change the procedures ten minutes before the hearing starts. That seems to make a mockery of the policy.
There are no other comments, we will start a roll call vote with Art.
Moody, you're no.
Good, no.
Vote no.
Scott, no.
Smith, yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Five, three, failed. Okay, item five, Dave, um, mo, make a motion.
Say it.
Well, well, we, we have to vote, we have to vote, it hasn't been voted on. You move?
First, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, we adopt item five. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Hold, same sign. Passed.
Thank you, sir.
Financial report? Oh, oh. Yes, come on. Could you do me a favor? I should have asked you earlier, but there is a policy that's on, in the package for the first reading.
Yes.
Could you, and if you can't, if you're not prepared to, that's okay. Could you briefly tell us what that particular change is and the significance of it? And I should have, I should have called you on that earlier. And it's dealing with the hedge fund.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I don't, I don't have the red line copy.
Hedge fund is hedging investments.
Hedge investments, I'm sorry.
With Jennifer's now leading our hedge fund.
Oh, it's the difference.
You ever seen billions?
Yes, yes. It's a big difference.
Um, at this moment, no.
Tell us what hedging means.
Depends what you want to hedge.
Go ahead.
You want to know what hedging means?
Well, just explain what, what the policy changed.
Um, I don't have those notes with me, so I guess I'm not prepared to speak on that at the moment. All right.
I, I didn't, I should have called you, I didn't, I failed. But go ahead with your financial report.
Okay. Uh, so, this is for the financial report, uh, well, included in here is the financial report ending November thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, the two months worth. Uh, but I am going to discuss the most recent one, ending December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Uh, if we could turn to page three, is the first page where I'd like to just highlight a couple of items. This is the first month where we have shown a forecasted variance, this, so far, the variance has been zero because it's been early in the year. Um, but now, you know, halfway in, we are beginning to look at first revenues. So you, you will see that we are showing revenues three point eight million below budget. This does not include the previous discussion we had earlier tonight about the enrollment numbers being down. This was just based on what we had seen so far as of December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Um, you will see a thirty thousand dollar increase in state revenues, that was really just an additional revision amount that we got from the coordinating board, the two point seven that you see in tuition and fees. Now, this report covers all of our operating funds, which is more than just Fund Ten. So where the majority of this comes from is two point four million in lower-than-anticipated activity so far in the corporate college fund. Um, I will note there that we have also budgeted in expenditures some contingency, so I hope that we can review the expenditures in that area to figure out where we can find some offsets. Um, but that is the majority of this three point eight million. The other amount is nine hundred and thirty thousand in taxes, that's just from monthly regular updates that we get in the assessed values. Um, so what you're going to see is all the way towards the bottom, if you remember, when you adopted the budget, the goal was to end the year at sixteen percent cash reserves. Right now, we are forecasting fifteen point eight percent. Okay? Um, but I will note a couple of things there. One, as I've said, uh, we have not done a review of the corporate college fund to determine where we might find offsets, and in addition, we've already talked about earlier tonight, looking at those budget reductions to compensate for the spring's enrollment numbers. So my hope is that over the next month or two, as I come back with this forecasted variance, that you can see this fifteen point eight forecast go back up to the sixteen percent that we want to end the year at as our goal. So that's my comments for page three. Uh, then if you could please turn to page five, I'm going to make some additional comments regarding Hurricane Harvey, because I've been including in the monthly financial reports the financials for Fund Thirty-five, which is where we are counting for all of our Harvey expenses. Um, you will see here, it's all the way on the right-hand side of the table, our actual expenditures to date related to Hurricane Harvey is eight point seven million, and we currently have another four point four encumbered. And then if you go to page six, I'll note that what we actually have left in cash right now, because we had gotten the ten million dollars in from the flood insurance, we have about one point five million dollars left in cash in that fund. Uh, but one of the purposes of using a grant-type fund, that's what Thirty-five is, is that it's set up to accept, to expend monies first to be reimbursed, that's how a lot of grants work. So that's the case here, we're setting up as a reimbursement-type fund where we make the expenditures and then hopefully one day FEMA reimburses the fund. Um, and where we are not expecting reimbursement from FEMA, that's where a lot of the agenda items that you've been approving each month states that, as appropriate, we will pull from either bond funds, um, or the reserve account, as we did. And that concludes my financial report.
Let me, let me go back just for a second on the hedging investments. So you're going to come back in next time, but what, what we're talking about is to get us in compliance, uh, I mean, the proposal, uh, goes along with the laws that were passed, the changes in the legislature.
Yeah.
So, we're not, we're not talking about wild speculations, and, um, it's been pretty rigid before, so we won't do anything until, we'll, we will come back and give you some examples and make sure we're all comfortable with that. Because I'm not going to be comfortable with it before we bring it to you, or something.
Yeah, I'll make sure I come next time prepared more to speak on it specifically.
The wording doesn't sound exactly the way, I mean, that's the wording, but that doesn't sound.
Well, you know, but it's my fault, I, I had the question when you sent the board book last Friday, and I typically call in and I didn't. So I take full blame.
That concludes my report.
Any questions? Excellent job, as usual, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, she doesn't have?
Okay.
Okay, board members, do we have any suggested future agenda items? I have one, Helen, that, uh, I would like, trustee Good did a great job of implementing, uh, trustee endowment, I guess I call it trustee endowment, et cetera. And I would like for, we have new members on the board that does not know about that trustee endowment, et cetera, and since trustee Good instituted that particular outstanding policy, I would love for her to come back at the next meeting, explain that endowment, and tell us what the current status of it is.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other future agenda items? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Oh, we love you.
Adjourned.